To order and if everyone could say the pledge of allegiance and observe a moment of silence soon after. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie?
Here.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Here.
Councilmember Motney?
Here.
Councilmember Ime?
Present.
Councilmember Becker?
Here.
Councilmember Correa?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Crable?
Here.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Here.
Mayor Malamboi?
Here, thank you very much. That was a different roll call from a few weeks ago with new names, so I was very excited to have everybody here. So next item on the agenda is our COVID-19 update by City Manager Gleason.
Good evening and thank you, Mayor and Council. COVID update for tonight's council meeting, shared from Camille Rodriguez, County Administrator, is that there have been 91 COVID cases since Friday. Walk-in vaccinations are available to all Illinois residents, not just exclusive to McLean County residents, and there's satellite clinics at Sarah, ISU, Heartland Community College, Leroy, First Methodist Church, and obviously the arena. The Health Department continues to be very appreciative of the city's generosity regarding the use of the Grossinger Arena during this ongoing pandemic. Big news out of Springfield last week, and staff definitely had their eyes on this. What does it mean for us as an organization and the community is the bridge face that was announced with an effective date of May 17th. There's a number of things that could be commented to, but I'm just going to hit some of the highlights as many different organizations or entities are looking for, are looking to possibly have events that they normally would. So festivals and general admission, outdoor and spectator events. Currently, we're 15 people per 1,000 square foot. That will be doubled in the bridge phase to 30 people per 1,000 square feet. Another one is meetings, conferences, and conventions, lesser of 1,000 people or 60% capacity. Another one, spectator events ticketed and seated at 60% capacity. Theaters and performing arts are also at 60% capacity. Zoos, for our municipal zoo, is at 60% capacity as well. We're looking internally, what do we do with the city facilities? And thinking about reopening all city facilities the first or second of June, and then also requiring that city employees, which is something that we've been working on for the past year, to be quite honest. What does that return to work look like once we do get the green light? And we'll probably implement far more city staff returning to work at 60% capacity. And the head count does not count those that share that they've been vaccinated and two weeks beyond complete vaccination. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay, thank you very much, City Manager Gleason. Next, we're going to move into recognition and appointments, and we do have a proclamation. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody online to receive a proclamation?
We do. For the proclamation, childhood apaxia, item 6A, we have Mandy Nicolades, and she's got her camera on there.
Okay, awesome. Thank you very much. If you give me a quick second here to get to the proclamation. Thank you for being with us, Mandy, and I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. So the proclamation is about childhood apaxia of speech awareness day, May 14, 2021. Whereas, May 14 marks childhood apaxia of speech day, during which awareness will be raised throughout Bloomington, Illinois, and childhood apaxia of speech, an extremely challenging speech disorder in children, and whereas childhood apaxia of speech causes children to have significant difficulty learning to speak and is among the most severe speech deficits in children, and whereas the act of learning to speak comes effortlessly to most children, those with apaxia endure an incredible and lengthy struggle, and whereas without appropriate speech therapy intervention, children with apaxia are placed at higher social secondary impacts in reading, writing, spelling, and other school-related skills, and whereas that such primary and secondary impacts diminish future independence and employment opportunities if not resolved or improved, and whereas most children with apaxia of speech will learn to communicate with their very own voices only if they receive early intervention, appropriate, intensive, and frequent speech therapy, and whereas it is imperative there be greater public awareness about childhood apaxia of speech in Illinois among community members, physicians, education professionals, policymakers, and elected officials, and whereas funders such as insurance providers, schools, and policymakers are encouraged to recognize the critical need to provide adequate speech therapy and other services so that the impact of this disorder is minimized, and so that thousands of affected children can grow into productive, contributing adult citizens, and whereas our highest respect goes to these children as well as their families, so their effort, determination, and resilience in the face of such obstacles, and let it be resolved that May 14 is Apaxia Awareness Day, and citizens of Bloomington and surrounding and surrounds are encouraged to work within their communities to increase awareness and understanding of childhood apaxia of speech. Sign, Volcom Malamboi, Mayor, Leslie Yocum, City Clerk. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is recognition of appointments. I should have said, would you like to say a word? Sorry.
Oh, I think he was gonna, we were just gonna say thank you. Say thank you.
You do it.
I did say thank you very much.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. Thank you for coming. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That's awesome. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is recognition and appointments. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody to recognize who has been appointed?
We do. We actually have four. We have one appointment, which was Stephen Campbell to the Japanese Sister Cities Committee, and then three reappointments. One is Don McBride to Japanese Sister Cities Committee, Dean Messenger to the Police Pension Board, and Kelby Comston to the Property Maintenance and Review Board.
Okay, thank you so much, and we would like to thank those individuals for volunteering their time and, and working with the city on those commissions and boards. Thank you so much. Next item on our agenda is public comment, and public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves to the record but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes, and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time soon. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody who would like to provide public comment live?
Yes, we do. So we didn't receive any emailed public comment, but we do have one person, Scott Steinle, who is present in City Hall.
Scott, you may go ahead. You have three minutes. Is he there?
Scott Steinle, Ward 5. I truly believe that the city infrastructure is terrible. I've noticed that the, we had a big rain, and all the debris started washing down the hill, plugged up the drain. I've, it's, the sidewalk is level with the road, and so are the curbs. I keep wondering when it's, when this is going to be resolved. I mean, I've been bringing this up for years, as you all are aware, and nothing is done. They closed City Hall to the public. I understood in the beginning that it's still closed, and they don't plan to reopen for months yet. And, you know, this may be one reason that the people have just about had it. The city taxes keep going up, the services keep going down. The public drop-off facility has had their hours dramatically reduced. I guess it really concerns me that if people would come into Bloomington, it would not make a very good impression of me, or to me. The other thing is, the, when Councilmember Correa made the statement about Alderman Becker, it did not sound well. I mean, if she does not want to engage, fine, but keep it to yourself. You know, I don't go saying what I do know about people. What do you think of so-and-so? I just don't want to just get in the middle of that. I don't think it sounds good for a public official to be saying how they do feel. And I'd really hope that she really considers how she did and apologized to Alderman Becker, because how would she have felt when she was going to start on the council if people would have said that about her? I don't think she would appreciate that. And to say, I'm really, the city starts, needs to live within their means as well. They keep taxes spent, and I'm not blaming this on you because this is your first meeting, but like, it had to happen in the past, or we wouldn't be in this mess that we are today. I've seen the sidewalks in my area, they go up and down. They're so bad that they have, there was somebody out with a walker one night, and they turned around and went back. The sidewalks were that bad. Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Okay, thank you very much. So no email comments, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that members of the council would like to pull for further consideration? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Bowlin, and second by Councilmember Carrillo?
Carrillo.
I heard correctly. Carrillo. Okay, thank you. Okay. So is there, so Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Sorry.
Yep, Councilmember Mathie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Ime?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Correa?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay, the item passes, and there are no nays to announce. So next item on the agenda is our, we're moving to the regular agenda. Sorry, so item 9A, consideration and action to appoint a mayor pro temp for, for the city of Bloomington as requested by Mayor Volcom Malamboi. And I guess at this point, I'd like to ask if anybody would like to, and I actually say, actually, Alderman Mathie is the only one who has expressed interest. So is there a motion to nominate Alderman Mathie as mayor pro temp?
Okay. Hi, I will, this is Julie. I will make a motion to nominate Alderman Mathie as mayor pro temp.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, I see Alderman Becker. So discussion? This is your opportunity to talk about Alderman Mathie. And not behind his back. Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Uh, Councilmember Mathie?
Am I supposed to vote on that?
Good question. Jeff, is he okay to vote on that? It looks like it is.
Sure.
Guess you're not saying, no, don't pick me, just easy. Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Ime?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Correa?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So there are no nays to announce. Congratulations, Alderman Mathie. You are now mayor pro temp. Would you like to say a few words?
Somebody's going to have to show me how the podium works when we get back in there. I know it seemed to be a, a pretty long-term issue for Mayor Renner, so I'm hoping I can figure it out.
Yes, I, I think we have more than enough capable people to help you with that. Awesome, thank you so very much, and once again, congratulations, Alderman Mathie. Next item on the agenda is presentation regarding the city services hub as requested by the City Clerk Department. City Manager Gleason, I believe you have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a very exciting night. Very soon, I'm going to turn the floor over to Deputy City Manager Billy Tyus and our City Clerk Leslie Yocum. This is about three years in the making. Council was very clear that they wanted to improve customer service for the residents, for the developers, and then also tucked into this was some very real space needs that we had as an organization. And then sure enough, we have COVID, and you would think that possibly there's no opportunities amidst COVID, and in fact, we have found that there were opportunities amidst COVID. The hub is something that is going to have a ribbon covin, cutting with the Chamber of Commerce next Monday, and it's very exciting. It's going to be at the space at the Government Center that was formerly our Parks and Recreation, and the idea behind this is at the street level, county residents, city residents can do all of their business at the hub. And it went through a variety of name possibilities, but we landed on one that Leslie and her team thought of, you know, at one-stop shop, or, you know, where you start and you get your stuff done, you know, just all of these things, and it's very exciting. The Deputy City Manager ran the lead on this over the last nine, 12 months from the City Manager's office, but really the credit goes to Leslie, our City Clerk, having taken something, and while the direction from me was to improve customer service and to make sure that this is a one-stop shop, make sure that we're improving the perception of government, and, you know, we control that perception with this municipality. And while we know it's not going to be perfect, it definitely is a huge step in the right direction. And I had mentioned that seizing an opportunity amidst COVID, we were never closed to the public. In fact, we used the arena ticket window and stood up a city staff, and then it became multiple city staff throughout the pandemic from day one. But we saw in that, Leslie came to me and asked, could we do a trial run with the hub over at the arena before we build out the space at the Government Center? And the answer was yes, and it's been very successful. So now I'm going to turn the floor over to the Deputy City Manager and to the City Clerk. Billy?
Thank you, Tim, and thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. You know how you're about to talk to a group, and then the person that comes before you says everything that you were going to say? So Tim has really covered this very, very well in terms of how we ended up where we are, and I really, I do appreciate it. As the manager said, we've known, we've been planning for a move for two and a half, almost three years, and as part of that, the manager's made as a priority, the creation of a one-stop shop for, for our city government, a place where people, residents and others who want to interact with the city could have almost a white-glove service whereby they're, you know, they can get all their questions answered, they can come and get and pay bills, they can apply for grants and services, they can do all those things at one location in a place that's rooted in, first and foremost, in customer service. Again, as the manager said, something that traditionally governments aren't seen as providing, rightly or wrongly, it's something that we are traditionally not seen as providing, a service rooted, rooted in customer service where people aren't sent from department to department to do different things. And so, again, we knew that we were moving to the Government Center, and the thought was that as part of that move, let's do this big, and let's do it right. As an aside, there'll be a presentation on the move in the coming months where we, this move is going to solve the city's longstanding space needs for years to come, but that's another conversation for another day. Again, as I said, let's create, create this front door to the city where people can do all those things. Actually, the manager mentioned some of the conversations about names. There were names like literally the Department of Doing, or the Department of Getting Stuff Done. There were things as literal as that, it's just so people knew this was something different, something special, and it was obvious to what we were providing. Before I go any further, Phil, do you have our slide, the slides? Could you put those up, please? Thank you. And so what you see on the screen now is actually the, the, the hub logo, and then other examples on the side of what we can do during other times of the year. You know, the hub during Christmas, the hub during Easter, the hub during Halloween, during Halloween, again, just examples of how we want to do this differently. And actually, one of the other things I want to do is to actually shout out our staff, Leslie and Phil and Sherlaine and others who worked to actually design these logos, and I love them, and they were done in-house. And so, Phil, if you will advance to slide two, please? As the manager said earlier, the pandemic hit, and it changed everything. But again, as bad as it was and is, it was an opportunity for us, and it gave us an opportunity. We knew that we needed to limit contact for obvious reasons for the public, for, for safety reasons and health reasons, but we knew that we also needed to still serve the public. We needed to stay open. One of the things we're most proud of is the fact that we have never closed, not one day during this period of time. And as, as corny as some may think it sounds, we believe that it's during times like this that the public needs their government most. They need those critical services that we provide. And so, our City Clerk, if you know our City Clerk, I'll use the phrase, she's a go-getter. And so what she said was, hey, we've got this opportunity. What if we do this now, instead of waiting the two years for us part of the move? And so all she needed was a yes, and we, she, and we have taken this thing as part of that. Actually, what happened was, we, we, she took her clerk's team, and we established representatives from all the different departments, most of the different departments, at the arena. And we've been operating at, where we've had a de facto hub at the arena where people would come and get all services provided. So again, when we didn't shut down, it was because we were able to continue to provide those services at the arena. You can see a photo on the screen of, of, of one of the days where they're working in there at the arena. So again, we've been operating, we've been continuing to operate since the beginning of the pandemic, and again, we're very proud of the fact that we never, never shut down. Phil, if you'll advance to the next slide, please? So we talked a lot about the hub and gave, given a general description of it, and literally, it's a place where we will get stuff done. And any of you that know, actually, our City Manager, a favorite phrase of his is get stuff done. And so literally, that's what's going to happen at this location. You can see on the slide, you know, you can do everything from getting bills paid, you can get licenses and permits, you can register for programs. We will have a space, and I'm going to turn things over to Leslie here in a second, but a space where if you need to meet with other departments, there will be a way to do that virtually, so people don't have to get sent from department to department to department to do work with the city. There will be locations on site eventually where people can self-serve, and they'll have people there to help them with, with doing the work. And so, again, it, it's, it's a place where we want to, we want to put our best foot forward as it relates to doing business with the city. You know, an example of, of, you know, say, say someone comes to town and wants to start a business, they don't know where to go. They can start here, and while this department won't, won't walk them through those steps, they'll get the, the developer into contact with the people that can help them, and also make sure that frankly, there is, there is follow-up, and that the, that, that the people, the person is served. So from beginning to end, people will be served and people will have their needs met. And so, again, Leslie is the expert on the nuts and bolts of how this is going to work, and so I'll turn things over to you, Leslie, and, and please take it from there.
Thank you. First, I just want to give a shout out to administration because really, it was something that Tim and I had talked about for a long time, and that we had wanted to do, and we thought it was a couple of years out, and I, I've kind of coined the term COVID momentum. It's one of my favorites, but it really was that, it, this opportunity to not want to shut down in a time of need during the pandemic gave us this window to try it and see if it worked, and worst case, it didn't, and I'm proud to say that it has worked really well. And so, you know, for, for years, I would sit in City Hall, and my staff too, and we would have somebody come and start with the clerk, and maybe three or four times a week, I'd point down the street and I'd say, see that building down there with the long skinny windows? That's the Government Center. I need you to go there. And after, you know, doing that over and over again, it was, you know, if we're customer-centric, and the citizens and the businesses are who we're here to serve, then we should be coming to them, not giving them the runaround of where to go. And like I said, administration in, in council and whatnot has, has just let us, us figure out how to make that happen. And so with the hub, May 17th, which is a Monday, we will be opening at the Government Center. We have taken the, what used to be the Parks and Recreation space on the first center there, I'm sorry, first floor there, right off of Washington Street. And we've basically just given an old space a facelift, shout out to Meltdown for wrapping us in vinyl and creating some, making something old look new, but it looks wonderful. We did it on, you know, minimal dollars in that sense, but it, it looks absolutely wonderful. You can see here, there's Ask Us Anything, We Can Help, and then you can't see, but far down on the right, it says Pay Here. So we have cashiers that will be seated here so that you can come in, pay your utility bill, or register a kid for parks, do everything in one spot. And we have what I call our bloodlines, and that's five departments are represented there, everything from Parks to Legal to Public Works, and we've got an amazing team, which we'll show you a little bit, in, in a couple of slides, we'll show you them. But it's been a learning experience and a learning curve, and a lot of citizens have come to us at the arena. We've gotten feedback, and we've tried to tweak best we can, and all I can say is that we're going to continue to grow and maximize the opportunities to serve citizens and businesses better. and maximize the opportunities to serve citizens and businesses better. So this is the exterior space. Again, you can access it from Front Street or from Washington Street. We're actually on the Washington Street side. We're working right now to update things such as creating 30 minute parking on the side of the building so that you can get in easily. There's a handicap space there too, so it's fully accessible and will service everything that we need. Anything that you come up with, again, if it's not something we've thought of yet, which I'm sure there will be those days, we have someone in place to help us make those things happen. We have a strategy and success manager who oversees this area. And her job is really to make sure that we're customer service centric. And for the five departments that are represented in the area, if there's somebody that you need to meet with that might not be represented there just yet. We have set up these reservable offices and conference rooms so that what we'll be able to do is have a citizen step into a conference room. And let's say, for example, there, it's a business and they're coming in to pay their food and beverage taxes. And they have a question that gets into kind of the nitty gritty of the taxes. Well, let's say we don't have somebody there and we need John Doe from finance to help. Well, in these reservable conference rooms, we'll actually have video conferencing available. So that that person can stand right there, similar to what you just saw earlier when Scott Steinling was giving public comment. Be able to sit there and have a virtual conversation, getting the answers that you need. So we've tried to think of it all and we're very excited. It truly is a private, you know, way of doing business. It's not a way that municipalities generally think, but we're super excited to, to service everyone the best we can. Do we have one more slide? I think there, Phil? This is the team that we, we've got to help you. We have everyone from cashiers in the city clerk department. Like I said, public works, parks, legal. It's, it's, they're an amazing crew. We anticipate in August, having someone from economic and community development there as well. And just looking for more opportunities to, to grow and serve better.
Thanks, Leslie. And I'll also add, this is again, was one of those situations where our internal teams, we, they, they get the credit for, for moving this forward. Everyone from IT, who is, who has provided the internal infrastructure for, for technology to facilities, to the department directors themselves, who have figured out how to operate with, with one of their staff members in the, at the hub. And so it's been one of those things again, where our internal team has done a lot of work to really make this happen. The other thing I wanted to ask Leslie, if you would, could you talk a little bit about the hive and how different that is and how it's going to be?
Yeah. So I don't know, probably six months into COVID or something, we were having an employee forum with Tim. And we were talking about how through COVID momentum, we've learned a different way of doing business. And, you know, we had people working remotely. And so we've seen opportunities where in some positions, people work better from home, you know? And, and what does that look like on a going forward basis? The other thing is, is that you can, we've all, we all have a job that we've been in, it gets mundane and you, you just wish you had a change of space, you know, to go and think and whatnot. And so we actually took the old downtown Bloomington office that was created before they came in-house at the city and have created the hive. And the hive, it's a play off of, right, honeybees, getting work done, et cetera. But it's an alternative workspace for staff. There's wifi available there. There's some location to, to just basically work in another location. But if, you know, they're at home and they have to come in, they just need a temporary space to sit down and check on things, they can do it from there. Same for anyone that has a physical office, if they need to work together in a small group or something like that, they can use that space as well. So just kind of taking existing space and trying to think different. And not just focusing on, as I was saying earlier, citizens and businesses, but trying to be mindful of staff as well.
Absolutely. Thank you. It's really similar in my mind to things like companies like Google and others are doing, where they're creating these collaborative workspaces. People can come and collaborate and work together. And, and again, just to change their pace at sometimes is, is, is good for, for generating. And so with that, we'll take any questions that you may have.
It does look like, Billy, that we have Jen Correa with her hand up.
Yeah, I just want to take a moment to say how proud I am of this work. It sounds amazing and it's a perfect way to like, you know, exemplify, I think, the kind of energy that the city needs, right? To take the things that we've been doing and to say, okay, well then to not be afraid to like break them and flip them on their head and see if they work. And we can come up with like some pretty wonderful stuff. So I think that's awesome. Just a couple of quick like messaging, no, because that's like, it's all the time. I think it's like making sure that we are framing this around residence services as opposed to citizen services. So we make sure that we are inclusive of all of our residents, whether they are citizens or not. And then I think that the other piece is just like around this framing from custom, as customer service. Cause I think like customer, I have like a kind of relationship that maybe people don't necessarily have with the city. Right? Like they maybe don't see themselves as customers, but as residents. And so just like, like we want to be pro-business and we also want to maintain the fact that like the city is not a business. It doesn't run like a business. It's about putting people at the center of things, whether that comes out of profit or, or not, right? So just like, those were just two quick little things that made my ears perk up, but just like super proud of your work. And I think it just goes to show that when we like hire the right folks, we have the right team in place, that really, really awesome things can happen. So thank you. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. I see Alderman Crayville, Councilmember Crayville.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just reiterate what Alderman Correa said. Just amazing job. Thank you. This has been talked about for a while, but actually to see it. And I look forward to seeing it next week. The only thing I would, I would say is I'm always a little confused when I walk into the government center, depending on what side I walk in. Is there going to be something on the outside saying this is the, this is the city hub versus, well, they, you know, maybe I'll walk into Front Street and I'll walk past the clerk's office and eventually find it.
Yes, there will be signage and also one of the other things that we're doing is we're working on electronic signage in the building whereby we'll be able to provide directions to the different parts of the building. And which we feel is, is going to make things easier for the public. I mean, it'll be obvious and in your face where you'll be, you'll know where you're going. And so Leslie, you want to add anything to that?
No, just exactly that. So the, many of you are familiar with the electronic billboard that has been outside my office here in city hall. So that'll be moving over. We're working with the county right now to, you know, team up on improved directionary signage, making sure they're ADA compliant and whatnot there. And then also, you know, as we eventually make the move over, we've got posting things that are going to happen. And we're hoping to use those electronic billboards to do that as well. Lots coming.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And I, Councilmember Crumpler, I see you, but Councilmember Bowlin had her hand raised, raised up. So I'll go to you next.
Okay. Thank you. I, I went over to this government center and I took a sneak peek and I'm excited for the ribbon cutting in order to get inside and see what's behind the glass window. So thank you for the work you've done.
Thanks. Very excited to have you guys out to Seattle.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Yes, I, I would just echo what's been said already. It's an exciting project that the one that's just really going to showcase the city. I would love to hear, you know, in anything like this that's new, I wonder what the strategies or, you know, practices that you have in mind to help make the public aware of this new resource. How are you getting the word out there so people will know about it?
Yes. Sorry, Billy.
Go ahead, please.
I was just going to say, so we actually started back in eight, March. March was the first one. So with our new utility billing system, we sent out in utility bills for March and April. There was an insert, a physical insert that was in utility bills. You know, the reality is the one, the residents that are coming out and paying for their bills in person are likely to be some of the ones that might be getting a paper bill still. So we felt like that was a really good avenue to hit key customers from that sense. And then we've also been, Billy and Amy Overton and Sherlaine Emmons have done a great job of putting together a marketing plan. So there's social media stuff that started. And then as, as you guys are aware, we're going to be doing a ribbon cutting with the chamber on the 17th at 11:30 that will be there on site. And we're also doing a town hall with the chamber. I believe that's 10 a.m. on the 20th. And so really any opportunities that we can, we've invited the media to come and cover it as well, doing this presentation. You know, taking any avenues that we can, especially, you know, the, the free avenues are the ones that we can hit easily for sure. But we're definitely open for any ideas that you might have as well.
One of the things, one of the other things we talked about was once the, the last box was moved over and things were up and running. Really doing more of a, of a bigger branding and outreach as it relates to, we'll do public appearances, we'll go to, we'll provide information to neighborhood groups. We'll, we'll, we'll ramp things up once things have really gotten moved and, and, and we're, we're open for business. One of the things that, to go back to the beginning of this is the manager was clear in all of this, do it big and do it right. He was clear in what he wanted and he, he's given us the opportunity to really do those things. And so we know that there will be a need for more outreach to reach a diversity of different groups. And so we'll be doing more of that once, once we're, we're, we're open for business. I'll say it that way.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other hands, at least on my electronic board here. And I should mention that if you do need to, to speak, it's a lot easier for me to see on the electronic board as opposed to raising your hand. So if you do raise your hand physically, you know, I'd ask for you to be a little bit patient. So like you, I can get to you or somebody gets my attention. Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you very much for this presentation and I'm really looking forward to it. And if I know Councilmember Crayville mentioned that he plans on being there, correct? At the the ribbon cutting. Yes. Yeah. Okay. All right. Awesome. So I plan on being there as well. And I, you know, and I know everybody's, you know, rhythm in life is a little bit different. But if you can, that, that'd be great to support the staff in this endeavor. So thank you very much. So we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item 9C. Consideration and potential action regarding ordinance 2020-18. The ordinance declaring a local emergency due to COVID-19 virus and enacting various emergency measures. And I believe we do have a change that the staff would like for us to consider. So City Manager Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We do in fact have a staff recommended change. A few weeks ago, previous council took action to extend the no shut off practice that we had here with the city regarding utilities. But a component of that, you know, that we need to clean up tonight, and this is what the staff recommendation is, is to clean up the accounting side of this. Where there was a fine and a penalty that was also attached to this. So with the action that was taken by the previous council, we need to strike the penalty phase that was also a part of this emergency ordinance. So requesting that approval this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the item as presented?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Okay. Motion by Councilmember Emig and second by Councilmember Carrillo.
Carrillo.
Carrillo. Okay. All right. I'm going to get it right. Thank you. Carrillo. All right. We're good. Awesome. Is there a discussion? I see Councilmember Crayville. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Somebody brought to, to my attention where it says no penalties. And how, does that, would that include interest as well? Or where would there still be interest accruing on, on payments that have not been made?
Let's see if Manager Gleason answered that.
Jeff, I see that you unmuted. I believe the answer is correct, that there would be no accrual.
So.
Right. Thank you.
Basically, the penalties are the interest. And so there, there is nothing additional that's accruing, no interest, no penalty. Penalties are what we charge for them.
Okay. Next, we have Councilmember Carrillo.
Yeah. I mean, I guess I just wanted to pick up the conversation on an email that I think it was Councilmember Matthew had sent about sort of what our longer term strategy is for folks who have accumulated debt and who maybe weren't, were in the hole before the pandemic started and for whom like, really, this is just delaying the inevitable point. Because I think that the ordinance says that they have X number of days to pay back anything that they owe. And I guess my sense is that at the end of that moratorium, rent will also be due for a lot of people. A whole lot of other things will be due for a lot of people. And so I'm just curious about what our sense is of how we address this in a longer term sort of sense.
This might be a perfect segue to a comment that I was going to make under city manager comments regarding the ARP, the recovery program. The first half of the funds, and I'll just go ahead and say it now, the first half of the funds should be deposited this week. We did see more guidelines came out today. And this is going to be a presentation, really our first public discussion at committee of the whole next week. And it's not so much talking necessarily about how the money is to be spent, but obviously council shapes this conversation however you choose. But it was going to be myself and Finance Director Scott Rathbun sharing what the guidelines are. And then also talking process. But to speak directly to your question or comment. We continue to try to push residents to some of the resources that are available. And I think we've all realized that there's going to come a point to where more is needed. And where does that more come from? But that's a, that's a conversation that will likely be a part of the committee of the whole next week.
Yeah. And I guess just to, just to reiterate as part of the record, you know, I'm supportive of us having a conversation about what it would look like to clear that debt. Given that folks are going to be in the hole on a whole lot of other things that we don't control. This seems not just like the moral imperative, but also, you know, a way to help folks get back on their feet so that they can continue to contribute in our community.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowlin?
Yeah. In, in tonight's minutes that we approved, there was a discussion in April about possibly setting up some kind of payment schedule. I don't know if it might be worth revisiting that as a possibility. Because I do think that having a schedule as an option, or at least part of the conversation, would be worthwhile. People are getting back to work and chipping away at what's due, whether it's for rent or water or whatever. I think that there should be a conversation about having an option to pay back on a payment schedule. However, that's set up, that would be up to the majority of the council, but I think that that should be looked into. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. I see no other hands. So at this moment, I will ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Matthew?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Correa?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Crayville?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay. Awesome. The item passes and there are no names to announce. Next item. Okay. Awesome. The item passes, and there are no nays to announce. Next item is City Manager Discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I do have a few items to share tonight. Phil, let's start with the first of the two slides. Downtown Farmer's Market, I think a lot of people, after the swearing-in ceremony on May 1st, strolled a couple of blocks to the south and walked around the beautiful downtown and enjoyed the farmer's market every Saturday, May through October, 7:30 in the morning to noon. Next slide. June 1st, Friday is June 4th, 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. It's cogs and corsets. This is our first Friday event, and definitely the weather's shaping up. Hopefully, this will be well-attended as it has been in the past. I think everybody is very excited about getting out, and this is a great, great event in our downtown. Thank you, Phil. Here's one, and it's piggybacks off of some of the comments, not perfectly, but some of the comments, you know, that we just had, but in previous council meetings. There is a new rental assistance program from the Illinois Housing Development Authority, IHDA, is launching on May 17th. This program will provide up to 12 months of past rent and three months of future rent payments for eligible applicants, up to a maximum grant of $25,000 per tenant. And again, if you don't mind, I'm going to read this again, and we're going to push this through the city's social media. New rental assistance program from IHDA is launching on May 17th. You can go to the state website and look at that, but we'll also have links on the city website for residents to take a look at that as well, for tenants. Another one that we're very excited about, a number of the council members have asked for this to be done. It's a conversation, something that the Deputy City Manager and I have worked on in our previous city, but really, no more have caught, there have been no more comments about this. And I'm going to say, positive prodding from Alderman Matthew. We have hired Johnson Controls to do a lighting audit. The city has about 7,000 light poles in our community, and some are owned by us, but the overwhelming majority are owned by Ameren and Corn Belt Energy. And what the lighting audit will do is, one, identify who owns what. We will explore opportunities with LED lighting technologies that can save money. Also, Wi-Fi component to this, there's just so many opportunities. But the very first step is understanding what we actually own. Lighting for us in this community is somewhere between $1 and $1.3 million. So any step to try to save some of the money will offset the $0.5 million that is taken out of the state motor fuel tax fund to fund or to pay for our lighting. So it's something that the city will analyze our current billing to ensure accurate billing, will ID possible savings from, again, LED upgrades, other system improvements, evaluate and assess benefits and risks of assuming ownership of utility-owned streetlights within the city limits, evaluate Ameren and Corn Belt lighting contracts, provide a list of potential improvements and operational efficiencies, and a projection of estimated financial benefits to be realized with system upgrades. So this is a big deal. We looked at two companies, and Johnson Controls in this audit just beat probably by a third of the higher bid from the other company that looked at this opportunity. So that's one that's kicking off now. There will be regular updates, or will be community involvement. That will be extended to our community, and look forward to seeing what the outcomes are and discussing at this setting what the possibilities are once we get the audit completed. Committee of the Whole next week on the 17th, we're going to have both public safety annual reports that are presented. Both, we've allotted about 15 minutes for the police annual report, and 15 minutes for the fire annual report, and then about 15 or 20 minutes for council discussion. So this is something that we do every single year. Push it back, just to touch this year, to get this new council seated, since we knew the election was right around the corner, and you would take office on May 1st. So that's coming on the 17th. And then also, to repeat what had previously been discussed, the American Recovery Program, we're going to make that presentation, Scott Rathbun and I, and really, how we're going to kick this off is to share the guidelines. We know the categories now, the allowable categories. And then also, potentially talk about process, and then the direction that the council takes. This discussion will follow your lead. Very much appreciate the time. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you very much, City Manager Gleason. I do have a few comments under Mayor's discussion. First of all, again, I want to congratulate Mayor Pro Tem Jamie Matthews. And also want to congratulate our, I guess I should say, new council members for their first, concluding their first meeting successfully, without controversy. But it's, it's fantastic to have you guys be part of the team. And here I'm talking about councilmembers Mottney and Becker. I do though, and also Crumpler. Councilmember Matthew and Councilmember Ward are pretty much veterans now. So I just wanted to mention the three who have joined us recently. Also want to thank the staff for an extremely well-organized swearing-in ceremony. It was fantastic to have it outdoors. This was probably the most attended that I have seen. And I, I think it might be something to do for the future. You know, but it was very well organized, very well received by a number of people. We're very happy. Weather was nice, everything seemed perfect. So thank you guys so very much for the great work that you did. My last, these, you know, my first week as mayor, but even the week prior, have been very busy with a number of events, such as Arbor Day, where a number of council members were present, councilmember Crable was there, councilmember Bowlin, as well as former councilmember Painter, who was also there. And this past week, I have also spent a lot of time meeting with a number of folks in the area, the leadership of Ferrero, which again, I'm very thankful for their involvement in the community and their investment in Bloomington. Also met with Congressman Davis, also Congressman LaHood, as it was more the, a courtesy, you know, meeting, conversation, but discussing ways in which they could be helpful to Bloomington and vice versa. The last thing I wanted to mention as well is that the hub does have a, its own website, bloomingtonhub.org. Is that, is that correct, Leslie?
Yes, that's exactly right. Thank you.
Yes. So, which would allow our residents to go and self-serve, and avail themselves to, to the services that we do have to offer. And I think that is all I have for now. And I'm going to turn it over to councilmembers. And again, let me take a look here and see who we have. Okay, councilmember Correo?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to make folks aware that, you know, because we had an election coming up, a couple of things got put on pause, but I'll be touching base with the City Manager this week to revisit some of the initiatives that had been submitted prior to, which includes an initiative around a source of income protection bill that it's, that is making its way through the Illinois Legislature. And then the second one being the welcoming city ordinance. I think that where we had last left things was that we were going to invite representatives from the Immigration Project and the Police Department. So I'm, I'm wondering if maybe, given that we're going to have a public safety report happening next week, if maybe we can have the police representatives report a little bit on what their process is with ICE. But I will talk to our City Manager offline to figure that out. But just wanted to let folks know, because you've been asking that those things have not gone away, just because we have some new members. They're still coming forth in a future Committee of the Whole.
Excellent. Councilmember Ward?
Yes, thanks. I would, would like to simply remind all of us that even though things are loosening up around the state and our community, the pandemic is not over. Dozens of people have died since the event in front of the McLean County Museum of History at the beginning of, of March, when we recognized a year since the, the pandemic really took hold in our community. And unfortunately, those deaths continue, even though it seems like people are, are holding back on getting vaccinated. And so if you have the opportunity to get vaccinated, go get vaccinated. You're saving somebody's life, and it's not just your own, it's your children's, it's your neighbor's, it's your family's. Do it.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilmember Ward. Councilmember Emig?
Thank you, Mayor Millam Wambway. I just wanted to follow up very much on what Alderwoman Ward said. And if you're not sure about a vaccination, talk to someone you trust, a doctor or a health official. Several people have told me that that conversation was what finally pushed them to feel okay about doing it. I also want to just make a quick public service announcement, and I do this in the same spirit I would if I were reminding the community to vote in an election. This week, there is much debate going on at our county board about redistricting. And I just encourage you to pay attention. And if you have a view, that you should communicate it to your respective representative on the county board. And finally, I really look forward to hearing more next, next week at the Committee of the Whole about the funding and the parameters and guidelines. So I'm, I'm very glad, Mr. Gleason, that you're planning to do that with the finance officer, I think. Looking forward to it. So thank you for all that you do. Great job, Public Works, too, on bulk waste.
Okay. I'm not seeing any other hands. So I guess at this moment, I, we do not have a, an executive session planned. And I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Councilmember Matthew, and it looks like it's seconded by Councilmember Bowlin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
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 Okay. We are adjourned.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you all. Have a good night. Take care.